One more second to our board president. We really appreciate all of you being here. We have a number of receptions tonight. My name is Bob McBride, Superintendent Lockport Township High School District 205. And you might wonder why are we putting the beginning of our board meeting in the East Campus Cafeteria? Since we're too many people for the board room. And you know, one of the things we have to kind of go into regular session. This is Anne Lopez Caneva, our board president. She'll do that and we'll be doing over here some handshaking, some acknowledgement of coaches, and athletes, and Eagle Scout Award winners. The reason why we did this is part of our board meeting, why we memorialize it on our livestream is because, gosh, you know, when students do things that you just don't even think are possible. Become an Eagle Scout, make it to the state series in Illinois in volleyball, one of the toughest and most competitive states for that. It is just so worth it to stop, you know, to acknowledge the students and to acknowledge the adults that made that happen. So really what we're about to do here is an acknowledgement of our students who made these accomplishments, acknowledgement of really important adults, their parents. Acknowledgement of another group of really important adults, their coaches. Acknowledgement of administrators, school board members who take votes to endow and have programs like this. They're top notch in the state. It's just worth it, just take pause and celebrate. And that's really what this is all about. So we're very pleased that you're here. This is a congratulations to you as a parent myself. I hope every single parent here take the win, you know? You know, you pour your love and your life into these, into these children. And this is a reflection of you two, right? So take the win. This is Lopez Caneva, take the meeting.
Thank you so much. First of all, the campus board of education, thank you for coming here. And yeah, just as Dr. McBride said, this is a time to really celebrate, you know, our students here and the outstanding athletes, you know, again, the coaches, all the teachers, and of course, the parents too. So, all right, we need to reconvene into the regular session. Do I have a motion to reconvene to regular meeting? All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Biese. And second, I'm Dr. Veronica Shaw. All right, at this point, we will start out with our pledge of allegiance. And if our athletes and Eagle Scouts, they will lead us in the pledge. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with our resolutions.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Jacqueline Johnson. I'm the East Campus High School principal. I am first going to recognize the achieving Eagle Scout status for Mr. Dennis Lee. Whereas Dennis Lee, a senior class of 2024 student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America for his service project, Dennis led scouts, leaders, friends, and family in clearing up any area of the school and laid down rocks, plants, and other accessories to create a sensory garden for those students in need. And whereas Dennis Lee has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school community, and troop 50, and now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Gold County, Illinois, that Dennis Lee is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on the 16th day of December 2024. Congratulations, Dennis. We have another Eagle Scout. Whereas Owen Kuchero, a senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America for his project creating a community butterfly garden for reflecting and relaxing at the cross of Lord Church. And whereas Owen Kuchero has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, and troop 63, and now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Gold County, Illinois, that Owen Kuchero is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on this 16th day of December 2024. Congratulations, Owen. And we have another Eagle Scout. Whereas Caleb Lentz, a senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America for coordinating the installation of an AED first aid kit and leading the training on the first aid and having the local firefighters come and give a class on proper AED usage for the scouts and congregation of the Hickory Hills Presbyterian Church. And whereas Caleb Lentz has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, and troop 50, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Gold County, Illinois, that Caleb Lentz is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on this 16th day of December 2024. Congratulations, Caleb. And we now call up Haley Johnson. All right, I'm going to read Haley's recognition. Whereas Haley Johnson, a current senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, competed in the state competition at the FMC Natorium in Westmont, Illinois, and achieved all state honors in the swimming 100 butterfly race and was also recognized as SWSC Girl Swim and Diet Athlete of the Year. And whereas Haley Johnson has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, community by achieving this respected status, now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Gold County, Illinois, that this resolution be adopted on the 16th day of December 2024. Congratulations, Haley. My colleague, Dr. Green, will do the next.
Thank you very much. It is an honor tonight to recognize the girls volleyball team of 2024. The girls could come up right along the front row. Ladies, you can stay in the straight line.
At this time, the first thing that I would like to do is introduce
At this time, the first thing that I would like to do is introduce the team. So as I call your name, if you could just give away to all of your fans out here. Kaylin Nelson. Emily McGraw. Sebby Dent. Michaela Marshall. Emma Concini. Malle Green. Samantha Vaganity. Kyla Mitchell. Sarah McGraw. Natalie Beauchamp. Amanda Vaganity. Olivia Barrett. Hudson Timochak. Malia Cole. Owen Hyam. Virgin Perator. And Jenna Colasone. This resolution recognizes the girls 2024 team. We'd also like to have the coaches, please come forward. Head coach Nick Maras. Assistant coach Penn Jones. The resolution, whereas Lockport Township High School District 205 Girls Volleyball Team competed in the state competition at Redbird Arena in Normal, Illinois, at Illinois State University, and earned the title of class 4A IHSA third place. And whereas the girls volleyball team has brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and community by achieving this respected status, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this day, the 16th day of December 2024. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. All right, ladies, stand there.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to our Eagle Scouts and to all our athletes, and of course, to all our parents too. Thank you so much. And at this point, we're going to have a five-minute recess. All right.
Budget, and we've moved our tax rate to the lowest of our seventeen peer schools and the fifth lowest in the state. Just phenomenal work, and I appreciate all of the effort that goes into that every step of the way. It is a long slog to get to that point, but we have, we have gotten to that point, and I think that the results are, are really solid for our community, for our taxpayers, and I think that they, they will provide benefits throughout the year, next year.
Thank you.
I would like to salute Dr. McBride and the staff that coordinated the food giveaway, the community share fest.
Share fest.
To help our families in the community. Do you know how many families came?
I don't. I don't know if, you know, and really I have to give the credit to, like, Mrs. Kishline was doing a lot of the, a lot of our staff did the pre-work. Bill Thompson and his staff were, couldn't do without them. Hundred and twenty student volunteers, just, you know, the folks at Share Fest. So, you know, there's so many actors. But it, you know, it was just great experience on Sunday, just to work it, right?
Yes.
You know, those of us that, that worked it.
Yes.
You know, I think, you know, Candace stopped by, and it was just a great event.
Well, I want to salute you, because it may be hard work, but it's worthwhile.
Oh, absolutely.
To give the community, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, I want to give my board salute to Kathy Maxwell, our recording board secretary for keeping us very organized, especially on Triple I. You know, everything went very smoothly for all of us, but thank you.
I have two board salutes. First, Dr. Johnson, I'd like to thank you for just uplifting the school community with your Where's Dr. JJ? Were you dressed up like an elf and everything like that? I know that that was really well received by the school, as well as the students, so I hope you had fun doing it, so, yeah.
A lot of fun.
And also, I just want to salute all of our teachers for getting the students through the first finish line of the school year, which will be finals next week, so good luck to you guys on that, but, um, thank you to our teachers for, for doing everything that they do.
I'm, I have two. One, I attended my first Veterans Night event, which I was, I thought was really moving and really compelling. Mike Soporsky was the head of that, and you can tell he genuinely passionately believes and feels that this event is just so very important for the community, and it was, I got to talk to some of the community members, the veterans, and they were just, just great and thankful to be recognized and just really pleasant to interact with. And Kathy Maxwell, you had a lot of help to do with that, too, so thank you very much. And then I attended my first Madrigal Dinner. Oh, my gosh, what a magical experience that was. I had no idea where I was when I walked through the, when I, what I got. Turns out we were on the stage, but I didn't know that. So, between the parents and the students and, you know, the, the sponsors of that event, it's, if you haven't been, I highly recommend, you know, the, the student actors did a great job. You know, they, they get to be snarky, and being snarky to your superintendent was, you know, can be a tricky task.
Fun.
But they, they did it well, so it was really fun, really enjoyed it all, and just always amazed at how much talent there really is in the student body, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
You guys took, like, all three of my salutes, but I just, I guess I just want to reiterate and say that I really like the atmosphere that the school creates for everybody who's involved. Seems that everybody has, it, it's really hard being able to balance professional work and having an atmosphere of fun. It seems that we do a really good balance with the Christmas thing that we did for the, our staff and how we are just in general. We are really good at being able to provide an atmosphere of just a good time, as well as having a professional school environment.
All right. Thank you. All right. Student board. Student. Go ahead.
I wanted to salute the World Language Department, specifically Senora Pratt. Last Friday, we had our Museo en Viva presentation in the port, which, if you don't know what that is, it's, you research, you choose one important historical figure as a part of Hispanic culture, and you research them, and then you make a whole poster about them, you have a speech that you present, and you do it all day, and all the class, all the Spanish classes come in and see you. And it was just such an amazing experience. Personally, being a bilingual speaker, I gained so much confidence in my language from that experience, being able to speak all day, and it really taught just an amazing perspective of how important it is to recognize the historical figures that are a part of your, your culture and the influence that they've had on your community.
I wanted to salute Dr. JJ again. That was just so much fun to see her run around the school in the trophy cabinets all around. So, but it really, it brings such a joy to the school in such a stressful week, and that is so important for our students. And then another thing I wanted to salute was Christmas Crossroads. I love Christmas Crossroads. It's always so much fun. You go around and you go shop and you meet a ton of new people, and it's, it's a lot of fun, so.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, so we're back to student board member reports.
So Avery and I first just wanted to start off our report this month by talking a little bit about our experience with Triple I, and the first thing that we wanted to really reiterate was just our gratitude that we were able to be included in that experience. Just throughout the whole day, I felt like, one, it was kind of a bonding experience in a way, which was so nice to be able to spend time with you all outside of the board meetings. I personally just felt so enriched coming out of that conference. I felt like I learned things from regarding my position on the board that I didn't really think about before. So, yeah, we really just wanted to say thank you so much for including us in that day. It was truly a magical experience. And then our superintendent advisory council met on December fourth, and this meeting really was not so much about a big presentation as it was getting into your focus groups and really getting working, because we know that if we want to make any sort of changes from that council, board policy starts getting introduced in January. So we decided this was really, like, the time to get into the nitty-gritty, get some assignments going, all those kinds of things. So we have a couple of things to report from each group for you guys, just so you kind of know what's happening. So our first group is Facilities, and Facilities, they really talked about the immediate improvements that they feel needed to be made to the school, which is exactly in alignment with what the Facilities Master Planning Council is doing right now. And then our second group was Guidance, and they really talked about since the superintendent advisory council and the board last year worked so much on getting more support for students, including hiring more guidance counselors, what are the next action steps that we can take to ensure better communication between our guidance counselors and our students? And there are a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I have the report here. So they actually interviewed a guidance counselor, which is very cool. Her name is Mrs. Tracy, and she said that students are not utilizing their resources to get help with AP courses, like Study Hall tutoring, Compass, and Kitchen Table, which I think is a really important perspective to know, as with our Equal Opportunity Schools efforts and all those kinds of things of getting more kids into AP classes. We want to make sure that we're continuing the story from there. It's not just getting the kid into the class, it's making sure they're supported. So if our guidance counselors don't feel like our kids are being supportive, is that a guidance counselor problem? Is it more students really aren't utilizing those things? So I felt that was something important to know. And also, a really cool story that she said was that one of her students did not think that he could succeed in an AP class. This was his first AP class. His guidance counselor went and talked to four of his teachers to really reiterate, to encourage him, make him know that they really are there for him, have his back, and he took the course and he did amazing on the AP test, which I really think is a testament to, obviously, our Equal Opportunity Schools work is very new. We don't exactly see the other side of it yet, but here's a story of success that I think is just very encouraging to the board of the work that they're doing. And then we have for, in terms of Common App and college applications for seniors, it was proposed that over the summer, the guidance department does a sort of workshop with our seniors on how to connect school links to Common App, how to work Common App, all those kinds of things. I know, being a senior, it was kind of a hard thing to navigate, so I could definitely kind of salute this in a way that, that would be a great thing for our guidance department to put together if possible. And then we have a sort of buffer period that they're proposing for course selection. Obviously, right now is the time for course selection, and next year, students getting into those classes, I think that sometimes students, you know, they don't really feel like the class fits for them, or it's too difficult, all those kinds of things. So creating a sort of buffer period, almost like colleges have, where they can add a class, drop a class, those kinds of things. And also, they really talked about how, just in general, it's very easy to get into a class, especially an AP class, but it's very hard to get out of it, which I know is something that the guidance department believes that students should persevere through those difficulties to find success, which is absolutely true. So it's just, I think, finding a better way to communicate to our students. It's not that we want you to stay in a class and fail, it's that we believe in you that you can be successful. So those are the reports from Facilities and Guidance.
So I have bell schedule here. They really like late start Wednesdays and Compass, and they're thinking about starting a thought exchange, so I'll just give you a couple of the questions, just as an example. So what are your feelings about the loss of class time due to the additional, the addition of an eighth period? What are your thoughts on potential block schedule? Would you like a later start time? What are your opinions on zero hour? What are things that you believe can be improved? And then what do you believe works about our current bell schedule? And really, they're just trying to get feedback from other students and teachers to make sure that they can set up a bell schedule that works for everyone. Calendar, actually set up a calendar, which is pretty cool to look at, so if you're interested, you want to pass it?
Pass it.
And that's just, they set that up according to them, so I'm sure they included the stuff that was important for them, including, like, those homecoming dates and everything. So if you want to take a look at that. And then we also got the opportunity to look at cell phone policies. We went through the handbook, and we saw a ton of different things that were interesting and needed to be changed. So noise-canceling headphones are prohibited at all times, change it to use headphones. The use of headphones is prohibited in hallways during school hours due to safety and security concerns. Headphones can be used in instructional settings, including classrooms, study hall, media center, and compass time, under teacher discretion. Headphones can be used in cafeteria as break time for students. This policy, policy is able to be adapted under the parameters IEPs and five, 504 plans for students. And then we also have the fact that, we noticed that a ton of teachers have it set up where they're, they have, like, the cubbies for the phones, which is super great. So if we got that throughout the school and almost made it more mandatory, it would be used, it would be used more, and then we could actually have a lot of communication in the classroom. And then on top of that, we also looked at the fact that just putting your phone in a cubby seems a little bit, like, not super comfortable for the students, but I know a ton of teachers, when they see a kid with their phone out, they go, oh, go put it on the charger, because they have a charger in the corner of their classroom. And it just kind of adds this more comfortable feeling to putting your phone away. So if we had something like charging blocks and stuff like that for when those phones are out and being used, we could put them away, but put them in more of a way that's comfortable for students. So, yeah. And thank you again for Triple I.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Do you guys have any questions? Oh, yes.
Oh, I am curious. What is your biggest takeaway from Triple I for the both of you?
I really liked the way Phil Boyd connected the entire room. By the end of it, we knew everybody in the room, and that was so, like, amazing to feel and so amazing to see, and just the way he did it was so, it was a very uplifting thing to see, so it was my biggest takeaway.
It was a really interesting experience for me, because I had a workshop with Phil Boyd just the day before, actually here at Lockport, and so it was really interesting to see how he kind of tailored his message based on the audience, but a main theme that he had in both of them that I really took away was just the importance of asking questions, that, the importance of knowing someone's story and taking that into account when you're having conversation with them.
I believe you guys were also, all four of you were in student panel. You were brought, yes, so other people can ask you questions, and so that was, that was good.
How was that experience?
Yes.
It was really cool. I kind of loved it.
I did, too. Yeah, it was fun. Always be prepared to talk.
Yes. Dr. McBride always tells us that, and it's a tried and true, tried and true statement, for sure.
Did you learn anything throughout your experience of getting to know people about, you know, other boards and how they run things and how we do things different? Anything that you took away from that?
Something that I thought was very interesting, that there are a lot of board districts that have middle school or even some, I think, elementary board members, which is kind of interesting to see how they structure that and putting their voice into it. A lot of districts also had a sort of a similar concept of, like, a superintendent advisory council, which I think really just proved how that's a very effective way to get a sort of transition between student body voice and us student board members.
That is exactly what I would say, too. It was so surprising to see that there were elementary students on boards. They, of course, structured it a bit different, but it was super interesting to see how then we had the superintendent advisory council that was always something that was there. It was like they always had some type of student council that was working with them, and, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Of course. All right. AFT report.
Katie, do you mind borrowing one of those mics? Sorry, it's not right front and center there for you. And, yeah, you got it. Thank you.
Just wanted to thank, of course, the principals and assistant principals, but more importantly, Lori and Jitan, Toni and Kristi, for all their work that they did to get our luncheon going. It was much appreciated, and thank you for all their efforts for the holiday luncheon. All of our staff is looking forward to our union holiday party this Wednesday at the American Legion. We have one more day, and we're, we're there to finals, so we always look forward to this time of the year. And again, a shout out to all the students that were recognized before our meeting tonight. Again, pointing out the dedication, time, guidance, and support that it takes from coaches and sponsors who put in the hours and hours of work to get those students to that level. So, thank you. Happy holidays, and we will see you next year.
All right.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. IASB governing board report.
I went, I'll talk about the delegate assembly. Okay. This year was the first year was non-controversial, is the word. I was able to pull the resolution that Lance wanted me to pull. There was some discussion on it, but when they voted, they still accepted it, so. I was trying to ask her around to see what prompted the resolution that was about having board members go through a background check. I was trying to see what prompted that. The school that presented it hadn't had any problems with that, so it just, it was interesting, you know. I think when we signed up as board members, that, was it, you signed that one document? What is it?
The Ethics Document. The Ethics Document with Will County, right.
Yeah, I think that implies that you don't have, you know, any kind of something in your background. So that's the way I always took it, you know? So, anyway. But other than that, things went the way that it was recommended.
Okay.
I think we had four hundred and sixty-one people in attendance, which is a rather high number.
Yeah, wow.
And usually, in years past, not everybody voted, but this year, everybody voted on the issues that came up, so.
Does anyone else want to talk about their experience at Triple I?
Just a, a couple of things. I thoroughly enjoyed the experience. First time, obviously, going, but lots of information just related to things that we deal with on a regular basis. I did attend one of the TIF seminars, just to, you know, continue to get more information about that and, and help understand it. You know, clearly some angst out there, not only with our state legislators. There was one state legislator that, that was on the panel for that one, and some audience members that weren't particularly fond of their state legislators that weren't listening to them related to TIF, but certainly gave me a better understanding for what it was. I went to one of the general sessions. I think Candace was there, too. I don't remember all the specifics, but a very well, well-done presentation, and just really captured a lot of powerful statements about how to improve yourself, how to collaborate with those around you, how to build support and things like that. And then just the, the proud moment of the day was watching our, our students get up in the panel and, and speak after being asked an hour before they had to do it, in order to do it, and each of them were grabbing the microphones from each other to answer the questions, which was, which was awesome, so.
That's great. Go ahead.
Speaking of general sessions, the, the speaker where the teacher, it was a teacher who was playing the...
Oh, Mickey Smith?
Yes.
Mickey Smith Jr., he was, yes.
That was an awesome presentation, and, you know, he makes it so that if you was his student, you want to go to class every day, you don't want to miss.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. He was a very motivational speaker and also entertaining with his stories, and I, I loved the fact that his mom, when he was playing the sax, said, just keep moving away. That was very interesting, but, yeah. But I attended an all-day workshop, the job of a board president and leading leaders, and I think the whole theme throughout that was the three Rs, you know, of being a board member, board president, is the role of a board member, the relationships with board, with your board members, and having good communications and good trust there, and then running a good meeting. So those were the three Rs that, you know, that I took with that. And let's see, yes, of course, you know, that one, too. But then I also attended, let's see, the, it was also with the state senator Sue Resin, and it was the state representative Will Davis and Martin Torres. He was the deputy governor for education here in the state of Illinois. So they really talked, really more of the EBF, the funding there, and teacher vacancies, you know, as far as that, and they were trying to see if they can brand nearby colleges, you know, so that they can get, you know, those college students to go into the education field. But, yeah, that was, it was interesting, you know, on top, but everyone kept saying, you know, we'll just have to wait. We'll have to wait till the selection comes up. And then also, what is it? I also attended board presidents' workshops, the roundtables. I always like to attend those, you know? But it's amazing that all of these, you know, local, these high school districts, you know, it's amazing that, yeah, when, when I say I'm from Lockport, oh, you know, Dr. McBride. It's like he's known all over the place, you know? And, but yes, they, but it's very interesting to see the challenges that other school districts face and everything, but, I mean, it's just like kudos to Dr. McBride. I mean, it's just the whole, you know, level that you brought us to this high school. It's amazing, because people that I, other board presidents that I talked to, they always kept saying that same word, we are so envious of you, we are so envious of you, you know?
And did you say, did you ever actually work with him?
Yeah, but it was very interesting, very good. Thank you.
Like Lance, the Triple I was my first experience, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go. The big takeaway I took from all the panels that I went to and listened to was really how, how important the board governance rules are really relied upon and leaned back on throughout a board member's work. All the panels that I attended always brought that to the forefront, from, you know, evaluating the superintendent to, you know, budgeting, to the one that you and I, Lance, went to. I can't remember the name of it, but I think it had something to do with...
Financing facilities.
Yeah, right. So just that it's the running theme, and then as a new board member, just really remembering and having it hit home just what a board member's job is and, and what the role is, and so I really just appreciated that. And also, the camaraderie of everybody, you know, even people you didn't know, just the level of energy and spirit and, and, I don't know, in some cases, extreme joy that were, that were running through the whole conference, so. And the two main speakers were phenomenal, very motivational, inspiring. I went to go get the, the book. It was sold out from the last, from one of them, so it's on my Christmas list. So, yeah, I just really enjoyed the experience of them, so thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Foundation.
Asha, did you?
Oh, no, sorry. That's right. Oh, I was going to skip her, sorry.
So I felt like I hopped around and just followed Dr. McBride around the conference, because I'd look over and he was in the session I was in. So if you want to hop in on any of these, feel free. I think the first one we went to was on transformative leadership and just the different kind of leader that's required to lead a school or a district at, at this time, just, you know, different challenges that are going on in student lives, so that presenter was really interesting. I went to another session, which was even more interesting, because it was more about, like, personality types and how to work with different personalities. So we had to take a personality quiz, and no one wanted to share their answers, because they were all kind of like, you learn stuff about yourself that I think you didn't know before. But it was just interesting, because then I was thinking about, like, okay, well, here's how I would approach a different person in this way. And then the Heinz Pachacca and Fester legal updates, they're always entertaining, so I enjoyed them as well.
Yeah, the, the bottom line of that is, there will be legal work in 2025, right?
Yeah.
Two things I would report to the board that I thought were highlights for me. I went to a workshop, just, you know, sadly, you know, based on the events of today, now more than ever, a half-day on school safety. And that was one of those, you know, sessions where everything the presenter said, you need to do this, 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 you know, check, 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 you know? You know, we, we've done all those things that were recommended as a industry standard for keeping a, you know, facility safe. The other was IASBO, and then my former district, Indian Prairie, one of the largest districts, did a presentation on fund balances, which was a very strong, you know, and another very affirmative, you know, interesting, you know, you're talking about Indian Prairie, which is, you know, dealing at any given time with about $600 million in fund balances, and it was interesting to see the, you know, much of the methodology that you're using, credit rating, all of the kind of things we've talked about, as a sort of exemplar our district is right in line with what we're doing as well. So it was great to see IASBO, you know, State Association of School, Chief School Business Officials, and then the CSPO for Indian Prairie, much larger, thirty-four building, you know, aligned to really the thoughts that you've got on fund balances.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to the Foundation Board Report.
And as I shared in the update, you know, tonight, we're just going to, kind of with some other things on the agenda, any questions for Mrs. Adolf? The Nutcracker coming up, and you have Cookies with Santa, which was a hit.
All right, Legislative Report.
Very quickly, recent, I think, of interest appellate decision in Crete Moni versus Lisa Capirelli-Ruff. In your, I do also have the paper copy of the decision. That was a detachment decision, very recent, in which the Illinois appellate court threw out a decision by the regional board to permit a detachment. So it sort of speaks at how long these can go on. The regional board decided to allow a group of citizens, a small community, to detach from Crete Moni. It went to an appellate court, and the appellate threw it out, that the arguments that the individuals made to detach, for example, use of test scores, was one of the things that the complainants seeking the detachment used, and the appellate court threw that out. So that brief is in your packet. Also, just to be very brief, just letting you know, there's quite a bit of legislative activity, a lot of talk, again, with the IHSA. The legislator is looking at the IHSA and, again, having a conversation, there's a historic one, and maybe the legislator takes that rollover. I would highly not recommend that. Superintendents made a play to be on the IHSA exec board. We were resoundly booted out by the membership, which I actually think, I disagree with most of my colleagues in the state. of my colleagues in the state, I believe that the IHSA is a principal organization, not a superintendent organization. And then finally, given the state series in a particular sport, everyone is looking again at how we decide playoffs, i.e. football, and private schools and recruiting and all the rules. So stay tuned.
Doc, I have a question.
Yeah.
You talked about the detachment issue. Does this have any bearing on, the state's been talking about for years, of consolidating some districts?
It really does. That's a good question.
You know, because we have, it was said that we have too many districts.
Yeah, I think it's a separate question from that, because this really is more of a question of can a group of citizens who have a reason, and their reasons are in the brief.
Right.
Why they want to detach. Can that group of citizens detach, right? Separate, take those tax dollars elsewhere? And it's interesting, you know, the one example, like the reason of test scores, right? You know, a group of parents saying, "We want to go to a district with a higher test scores." The appellate court threw that out as a reason under state statute that you can actually detach. There's a whole other list of reasons that they were seeking, but all of those, the appellate court threw out. I think the main reason for the brief is that these are very lengthy, right? You have an appellate decision, that decision can be appealed to the Supreme Court in Illinois. You know, usually these detachment, you know, de-annexation, annexation, they can take 10, 15 years to make their way through all the different adjudications, so.
Just curious.
Yeah.
All right. All right. There was no really follow.
We had no public comment last.
Nothing. Okay. All right. Moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to be, respectfully follow the guidelines of policy 2:230 and policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board, and there is none. As you can see, there is no communications and no freedom of information's request. All right.
Wait, there's one.
Okay. All right. All right. Did you want to read that? The communications?
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
It was the Freedom of Information Act. It was commercial.
All right. Okay. All right. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the board meeting minutes of November 18th and the closed session meeting minutes of November 18th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Thies. Any questions? All right. Roll call.
Garrison?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next, we have a motion to approve the December 2024 board expenses.
Wait. Never mind. Go ahead.
You missed the closed session minutes?
No, I think I combined them.
Don't you?
I combined them.
You can't combine them. I think you did, I think you did combine them.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was trying to catch too.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the December 2024 board expenses?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? All right. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next, we're moving on to our treasurer's report. And Ms. Stephanie Croy, if you have, if we have any questions?
You know, if there's any, you know, there's nothing really unusual this month, typical financial reports. We'd have Stephanie come on up, you know, certainly come up when we talk about the levy, but if there's any.
I have no questions.
No? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the November 2024 treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Superintendent update.
Yeah, you already heard it from everybody else, the amazing amount of events we've just had in the past couple of weeks, from Veterans Night to Madrigals to Sheriff Fest yesterday. And just, you know, as my colleague, Mrs. Kishline, always says, just, it's important to recognize all the people who throw their shoulders in and honestly, hours it'll never go compensated except for just the service, you know, of that. You have also heard, you know, it was a day. You know, you heard a little bit about the elf on the shelf today. I think that, you know, oh, I think that's Avery Colala there. But the hype was real, the workman's compensation claim, I was very doubtful about Dr. JJ in the cabinet. I was very concerned about her being.
Do we have a picture of that?
And I'm not sure if I can tell you why she's in a box, because that's a trade secret.
Do we have a picture of the cabinet? Do we have a picture of the trophy cabinet?
I don't. I don't. But what I will say is, is she in there?
Wait.
She's up, yeah, she's there. Oh, yeah, that's her there. You know, she solved in an ingenious way, how would she get around without people knowing? So we got a big, huge truck, you know, hand truck, a giant box. She sat on the hand truck, put the box over her, making someone look like they were just pushing a big old box. So how did she magically appear, you know? So just a lot of fun. And then also, just real quick, I just think it's worth seeing, you know, some of the work that you've been doing and some really good work by, you know, PR department, we just published this, you know, which is a recap of some of your engagement, you know, over the summer, I mean, over the school year. This was just published today. You know, nice, nice work by Mr. Slager here and by, certainly by Jeanette Castillo and Grace Gonzalez, so just highlighting the, you know, engagement you've had over the past year with the community and decisions that you've made. Everything else, any, I don't know if there's any questions? Happy to answer in the report.
Thank you. It's a good video.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then you have there in your packet also the protocols and communication, just for your review.
Right.
I have a quick question, if I could. On the protocols, on page three, I think there's maybe just a typo.
Could be.
Instead of three minutes, I think it should be five?
It probably should. Three minutes is the kind of state standard. And my guess is that our ISB rep, Natalie Williams, might have put three minutes in there. I'll find it, but I think I've seen that before. Oh, it's right here, board meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, the sort of state standard is three in most districts. We do five per participant.
Right.
So we can change that for sure.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our information reports, the curriculum report, you have it there.
And on all these reports, we were just tonight intending, you know, having talked to the board, just to, if you have questions for Dr. Huntington, Dr. Christopher is out today, if, you know, if there's any questions. And Ms. Lopez, can you, do you want me to move through each one?
Yes, please.
Similarly, you know, principals report, kind of neat to see Dr. Green, you know, preside over, her daughter was a member of that team, and then to see, you know, Dr. JJ as well, with all those great things going on, lots as usual happening, so just slow us down if you need anything. We do have an overnight field trip, and we just always want to let you know that. We've got students going to the Illinois Music Educators Association Convention in Peoria. That's happening. We also have, some of our cross-country team members are heading down to Orlando, and then also we've got a ski trip, and we've got AP Spanish traveling as well. Just want to let you know whenever our porters are overnight. And finally, maintenance report, you know, Bill Thompson highlighting a number of different things. I think the most important thing is he had a very fruitful meeting with DLA and Burgland. They're firing up staging, the work on the roof, the exterior tuck pointing, and the electrical system at Central. What I would report that's significant in that report is they're proposing, they're finding, you know, what work can really get done in the summer. They're finding probably a better approach is to replace parts of the roof because it's total replacement, rather than tearing the entire roof off. Let's tear parts off that need the most, so a gradual approach. Similarly, with tuck pointing, let's get at the sections that needed the most, that's also fiscally responsible. Then finally, instead of taking out the entire electrical system and come on back to school, doing some testing, maybe doing one section, we would put a new electrical system in, and then also doing an electrical system audit. Where's the cloth wiring? What switching gear needs to be replaced the most? So gradual approach, which we think will have the best outcome, Burgland thinks it will, and then also is fiscally very conservative as well.
All right. Thank you.
Would Burgland do the electrical work?
Burgland, as our construction managers would bidding, they would give us a cost opinion, but they would be the ones who would lead the bid process. And in terms of electrical, I don't believe that they're self-performing, meaning that Burgland, you know, has, you know, sort of electrician wing. That would probably be companies, you know, competing in a competitive bid, and Burgland would oversee that. Obviously, we'd be involved, but.
And they would work with DLA?
They would be working closely with DLA.
Is there any chance that for this coming summer, we could be in our same situation as last summer, where school might be delayed, or there's kind of a crunch to reach the deadline for school to start in time with?
Ms. Fontanata, I would never say never, right? Because, you know, the minute, I would even never open my mouth to say if we start working on a roof or the exterior tuck pointing. I don't want to curse ourselves, right? It, you know, it's always possible. When we did projects here, you know, we did roofing here, you could find something that could delay school that you did not anticipate. But I think part of the gradual approach is thinking exactly that. You know, let's not bite off more than we can chew. Let's really think this through and make progress to avoid, you know, exactly that kind of situation, right? So one way also, you know, in addition to being fiscally conservative, to do the job well. When you take away pressures of time and you've got to get open on a particular day, you know, people tend to feel, hey, I have an abundance of time to really do this section Great question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Next, let's see, consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number two to number six?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right. Roll call.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to our excellent consideration items. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution levying taxes for the tax year 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Is this what this plan out was about?
Yeah, I would just point out very quickly, one of the illustrations that, you know, first, there's obviously for the public and for yourselves, very long text. You know, it's such a seemingly short page encompasses a tremendous amount of work that Stephanie Croy did. So I think, you know, she deserves quite a bit of accolades. It's a huge, huge, multi-layered, tentacle job. But I think, you know, there's an illustration here that you have, it's in your folder, in your binder, and it really is an illustration of what, at the, you know, at the person level in Lockport Township, Homer Township, if you own a home that last year was valued by the assessor at, you know, fair market value of $257,000, what, you know, the assessor's evaluation brought it up, $286,000. How does that impact your EAV? What ultimately does this tax levy mean for that individual, right? Sometimes what happens in the public is someone will see the levy will go up. You know, you're abating almost half of that increase back to taxpayers, but it'll go up. And sometimes people will believe that that percentage will directly be the percentage increase that they pay. Seldom is that the case, especially with like what you mentioned, Mr. Thies, of the low tax rate. Because what you might see is the times the tax rate, you know, you can see that that tax rate from 2023 to 2024 is actually lower. And that's the multiplier that's used to generate your taxes on the value of your home. The one thing we can't control on this sheet is the valuation of your home. You know, that is entirely outside of the control of the school board. You actually respond to that and really have no question in that at all. But we wanted you to have that, obviously the public to have access to that, to kind of give an estimate of what, what does this levy, you know, homeowner in 2025, what does that actually mean?
Do this go to the facilities committee for discussion?
Yes.
So, yes. Yes, I think we did, yes.
Tax levy, including that illustration, yes. The last couple of meetings.
Yes. How did it go over with the group?
Have the members.
Yeah, we were there. I mean, it went pretty well. I mean, I think it was one, I believe it was that first date that we talked about it, was in October 7th, I think that's when you were starting to talk about it, right? Yes, I think it was in October. And yeah, you went into deep detail with that also. Then we talked about it November 11th, and I'm looking here, the 18th, and then we also met on Monday, December 9th. So, yes.
So they seem to be on board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, you know, just to remind the public and the board, the budget is a declaration of expenditures, you know, what the board plans to spend. The levy is a declaration of how the board will pay for that budget. So just, you know, two separate but obviously related processes, so.
So did they seem to get it?
To clarify, the Facility and Finance Committee meeting is when we were talking about that. The Master Facility Planning Committee, is that what you're talking about? Because we've covered facilities, not taxes.
Yeah, we have not, Ms. Johnson, and the Facilities Master Planning Council, we've only worked on facilities. We've not worked on, you know, the finance part of it. They just are looking at facilities.
I'm talking about the one that Ann and.
Oh, okay, got it. Yeah. Ann's right, all those dates that she gave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I would add in there, we had a very robust discussion about it two meetings ago, related to, you know, the budget increase year over year. The, like I mentioned before, you know, our budget pre-ceiling collapse, if we were just looking at last year as being a normal year, what our budget was at that point to what is being proposed this year as being a plus or minus 2% increase over what that was last year, even though it's a decrease from our adjusted budget from last year into this year. And we talked a lot about, you know, okay, if we've got a 2% increase in the budget and our, and our rate is slightly higher than that, what is the delta in that? Why is that delta there? And a primary reason behind it, as we talked about it, was a reduction in the corporate personal property tax that we don't have any control over. It's another one of those items that we don't have control over, that is governed by the state and how they disperse those funds. And so, you know, better understanding how that relates to the budget, relates to the amount of levy that we need, and while still keep, being able to keep that tax rate driving down at the same time that we are, we're looking within those numbers to make sure that what we're proposing is manageable, but also trying to be as efficient as we efficient as we can be with those dollars, and it certainly parses itself out once you start to look at where our tax rate is in relation to our per-districts, as well as across the state. So all of that stuff came together, I think, gave us a really good picture at, at where we are and, and what we're, what we're proposing.
Yes, no, it's okay, yeah, yeah, like I said, in those data, view meetings, yes, we really dug deep into that, you know, and, and Stephanie shared, you know, charts and everything with it, and, you know, we, we asked questions, so, yes.
And there was, there was some conversation about that as well at the last meeting, where we did the preliminary review of the, of the tax rate, we, I had Stephanie run through a couple of those items as well during that meeting, too, just so we can make sure that everybody gets to hear the same information.
And you're voting on the levy now, and you might just recall, your next two items are the abatement back, you know, you, you're also, in addition to the things that Mr. Thies mentioned, you're operating in such low debt right now, that you can use fund balances, in essence, to, to pay that debt, right? And abate that cost back to the taxpayers, so you're, in those next two votes, you'll, in essence, discount the levy, you know, you'll discount, you know, what an individual homeowner will, will pay by subsuming, you know, a, a cost that you, you would, you would add on to the levy to, to service your debt, so.
Okay. All right, so it's already been motioned and second. All right, roll call.
Navarro?
No.
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the Resolution Authorizing Permanent Inner-Fund Transfer and Abating Debt Service Levy for the 2019 bonds?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Navarro? Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the Resolution Authorizing Permanent Transfer and Abating Debt Service Levy from the 2017 bonds?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the Proposed International Travel?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, roll call.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the new copier lease with Xerox Business Solutions Midwest?
So moved.
I can second that motion. All right, it's, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Lopez Caniva, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Yes. All right, Policy Updates, do I have a motion to approve, press 115, Policy Updates as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? Roll call.
Tease? Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the Press 116, Policy Updates as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the Policy 7:70 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that policy? Hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Closing items, announcements.
All right.
We'll see listed there.
Yeah, a couple, one, from Team Maxwell and McBride, you know, you have little goodie bags, and, and those are actually personal gifts from us, you know, just happy holidays, we really appreciate you as human beings and working with all of our school board members, so we just, you know, joint cooperative efforts, I hope you enjoy what's in there, that's just our personal thanks, you know, to all of you and the, and the, and the good work that, that, that you do, to all students and teachers. Good luck on finals, and especially, you know, let's send some positive energy to our school board members. Kind of things, you know, you guys will do a great job. You've got it there, holiday concert tomorrow night, winter break starts on Friday, we get back, we have a District Institute Day, breakfast, you know, I'll get you information, you're always welcome, you know, to come to the breakfast, Mix Mingle will be in the auditorium, you know, to kind of kick off, very short, very brief.